Good evening, everybody. It is the ninth of August. Welcome to our regularly scheduled Town Board meeting for the town of Rhinebeck. Would everybody please stand and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve our prior minutes for July 26, 2021, regular Town Board meeting? Thank you, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Just one announcement, and then I'll come back to it. The COVID cases of the Delta variant have doubled in the county in the past week. Throughout the past 16 months, the Dutchess County Supervisors and Mayors met on the phone two weeks and then one week with our county -- every -- twice a week and then once a week with our county Executive, his deputy, people from E-911, and the county Department of Health. We are going to resume those calls on Friday because of the uptick in the Delta variant. So we will most likely be talking about discussing some sort of measures here at Town Hall. Right now, everyone is mandated, the public is mandated, to wear masks. Our staff will go back to wearing masks full-time, and we'll monitor and discuss what else we're going to do in light of this Delta variant potentially surge. We were going to have a presentation tonight from Dr. Meyer Armstead, Bard College Vice President for Academic Inclusive Excellence, and Lynn Ford Patterson Edwards, and Helen Gray Edwards, Professor of Historical Cities, regarding the Allmudau murals. Dr. Armstead's schedule changed, and she is not able to join us. She did write an overview for us, which we will publish in -- at our next meeting. We will send it out by email, put it on our website. It has some great insight to the historical depiction of enslaved peoples in the murals, and we will continue this as a discussion. The board did contract with Dr. Armstead to look into this and give us her opinion. So we want to thank her for helping us continue to look at this and speak about it. Let's go right to a discussion item, which is actually -- let me get the resolutions on the floor. I'm going to get two resolutions on the floor. Do you want me to do one at a time, Alan?
No, you can do both at the same time.
I'd like to make -- I'd like to have a motion for Resolution 2021-161, accepting a proposed local law and scheduling of a public hearing for the proposed local law to be numbered in the year 2021 entitled "A Local Law Opting Out of Allowing On-Site Cannabis Consumption Sites As Authorized Under New York State Cannabis Law Article 4." May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. This is for lounges, otherwise known as lounges. And at the same time, I'd like to make -- I'd like to have a motion for Resolution 2021-162, accepting a proposed local law and scheduling of a public hearing for proposed local law to be numbered of the year 2021 entitled "A Local Law Opting Out of Allowing Cannabis Retail Dispensaries As Authorized Under New York State Cannabis Law Article 4." A motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Any discussion or questions from the board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any proposed -- the motions are on the floor. I'm going to turn this over to our attorney, Warren Replansky, and our planner to meeting, who's going to explain the timing of this, why we're doing it like this, and what it all means. So, thank you.
So, as you all now know, in March of 2021, the governor signed the Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act, which legalized adult use of cannabis, also known as marijuana, recreational marijuana in New York State, and created a new Office of Cannabis Management, OCM, governed by a Cannabis Control Board. Sorry. Can you hear me? The OCM, the Cannabis Control Board, will issue licenses and develop regulations outlining how and when business can participate in the new industry. As far as the local municipalities are concerned, we do not regulate the use of marijuana within our borders. That's governed by state law. There's nothing we can do to either make it legal or not illegal. That's -- that will be controlled by the marijuana law on a state level. What the cities, what the municipalities can do is opt out of allowing adult-use cannabis retail dispensaries or on-site consumption licenses from locating within their jurisdiction. And the opting out has to occur by December 31, 2021. And if the municipality does not opt out by that time, then you will -- they will be opted in, and they will be permitted the on-site consumption, and we call lounges, and the retail uses will be permitted within the jurisdiction of the town, subject to zoning law amendments, which the town will have to create at some time thereafter. We're not anticipating that this law will be, on a state level, be fully implemented for at least a year or two. However, if we don't opt out by December 21st, you're precluded from opting out at that point. So what we have prepared are two local laws. One will provide for opting out of the retail establishments for marijuana sales, and the other separate local law is opting out of the on-site consumption, what we call the lounges. And I have paired, with the help of our planner, two resolutions to start the local law adoption process on these. The local law will not be passed until we have a public hearing on the local law, and the Town Board at that time can make a decision as to which local law it wants to move forward with, or doesn't have to move forward with either of the two local laws. It's a legislative act, and you can always withdraw the local laws at any time. The local laws do not become effective until there is a permissive referendum, which means that from the date of passage of the resolution by the Town Board, whichever one chooses to adopt, it will be a 45-day waiting period. At the end of the 45-day period, if no petition is filed calling for a referendum, which is a vote, then the local laws become finalized, and that's the end of the process. If during that 45-day period, a petition, valid petition, is filed on one or both of the local laws, then the Town Board needs to provide for a referendum vote. It's unlikely that that could be done by the --
Yes, I'm sure.
-- by the biennial election. Probably it would have to be a special election. There's some ambiguities in the law, which we're trying to resolve with regard to that. But basically, for tonight's meeting, I would like you to schedule a public hearing on the two local laws. We have what we call a white paper, which we have adapted from the village of Rhinebeck. They've prepared a very good explanation, and you've amended it somewhat, so it's not identical. And we've attached to that a very good memorandum from the Office of Cannabis Management, which really gives a very detailed explanation of what I just discussed, somewhat more detail, and also discuss the regulations that we can put into effect and can't put into effect from certain aspects of cannabis laws that we have no control over. We don't -- we cannot regulate the growing of marijuana, the industrial aspect of that, and that's all governed by state law, and licenses will be issued for that. If it turns out that we are going to allow lounges, or if we're going to allow the retail sales, then we will be working on adopting the regulations for that as amended to our zoning code. So tonight, we have just -- the board needs to adopt the resolutions, schedule a date for the public hearing. There is some changes that were made to the white paper, the informational paper, not drastic changes, and the Office of Cannabis Management document is attached to that. I think with that, the public will have a lot of information, so they'll be able to weigh in on this at the time of the public hearing. I don't know if we plan on taking any questions or getting any input tonight.
Sure, we can.
If people have any input, that's fine, but we will be making the decision tonight to go forward with the two public hearings on the local laws, regardless of what the input is tonight.
Okay. I just --
Go ahead.
If we adopt neither resolution, that means that both lounges and dispensaries are allowed. That's not subject to a permissive referendum.
No, no.
Only if we opt out.
That's correct.
The reason why we're doing it like this, and it's odd, is because of the way the law is written. It's a very long, complex law, and we didn't have a lot of time to react to it. We don't know, as a board, what we want to do yet, so we will automatically be opted in to allowing both dispensaries and lounges in our town unless we adopt local laws saying we don't want to do it. So we are presenting these local laws to try and meet the end-of-year deadline. We don't have a lot of time to do that, and to get solicit public comment at the same time. I don't think this board has made up its mind what we want to do, and we do want to listen to you. It's, as I said, a complex law that maybe wasn't elegantly laid out for us. So we do want to hear what the public wants, and that's what this process is about, allowing us to get it done before the end of the year, so that we aren't automatically opted in if that's what the public doesn't want. We can always opt in at a later time if we opt out, and once we're out, we cannot go in. So the business --
Once we're in, we cannot go out.
Once we're in, we can't go out.
I'm sorry. See, I get so confused. Once we're in, we're in. Once -- we can't go out. There is potentially tax money available for us. We would get 75% of the revenue --
Of the tax revenue.
-- of the tax revenue that goes to the county. The county will get 25, we'll get 75. It could be a nice chunk of change. We don't know. We don't know what the other towns around us are going to do, and as Warren said, if we opt -- if we don't opt out of this and we allow either dispensaries or dispensaries and lounges, we will control where they are allowed through our zoning. That's the long and short of it. I hope this is clear. It's confusing for us as well. And we plan on having as much time as we can to take public comment and discuss it before having to opt out by the end of the year. And for one, as one of five legislators, I'm fine with having to pay for a special election in order to have ample public discussion time. We're trying to make this so that it can be on the ballot on the 2nd of November, so we have to back out the time that a permissive referendum has to be done, so that it can make it on the ballot. I think we have to have a decision by sometime in September. If we need more time, we'll take it, and we will fund our own special election if anyone carries a petition for a permissive referendum.
I think that's it?
I think that's it. Any comments from the public or questions or concerns?
Yeah.
Are you guys going to take us through the white paper? And if anyone has any concerns after that, we can certainly --
Well, I think the white paper is much different than what I went over. But the -- we do have to pick the date for the public hearing, so I have the next board meeting on the 23rd. I'm recommending that we schedule the public hearings on that.
I will not be here on the 23rd.
Okay. Hold it just a moment. And I have a -- actually, I have a question, too. Maybe we should pick a date for a special meeting?
You want to do a special meeting on the 30th?
Hold it.
Sorry.
Maybe.
I am away the 20 -- yeah, I am away the 23rd through the 31st, probably enough.
That works for me.
We can do one next week, or we can do --
No, that's not enough time.
September 1st?
Yes, that works for me.
Let's see if there's --
September 1st.
That's fine with me.
Let's see if there's anything on the calendar.
Special meeting on September 1st?
Well, let's call it a special meeting for September 1st. Do we want to cancel our Septe -- our August 24th meeting and make it September 1st?
Yeah.
That's a good idea. It's okay.
We're going to cancel our regular meeting on the 24th and reschedule it for September 1st with a public --
No, it's the 23rd. The 23rd. August 23rd would be rescheduled to September 1st.
Thank you. We're going to cancel our meeting for the 23rd, reschedule for September -- Wednesday, September 1st, with a public hearing to begin around 6:00 p.m.
So we will have to notify the newspaper in writing of the special meeting date, so it's seven days in advance, and I will prepare the notice of public hearing for both local laws.
Thank you. And, you know, depending on what -- we can keep it open and schedule as many public hearings, special meetings as we'd like. Again, this is a sensitive issue. It affects our community, affects the character of our community, it potentially affects revenue, and we want to know how people feel about it.
Absolutely. Do we need a motion to accomplish this?
I think we do. Motion to cancel our regular Town Board meeting on August 23rd, reschedule for Wednesday the 1st with a public hearing for the two proposed local laws. I'll make a motion. Thank you, Chauncey, for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Two other related matters. I -- we -- our planner and I discussed whether this is an unlisted -- a Type II action under secret, but we figured it's a unlisted action, so we do need a environmental assessment form. We do have to do an environmental review. So I prepared an actual full environmental assessment, the long-form environmental assessment form, which is actually easier to utilize in a case where you're -- where it's a legislative decision rather than a site-specific proposal. So if we could just have a separate motion to adopt the Part 1 of the two environmental assessment forms for local laws.
So moved. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Again, are there any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Okay. Thank you for coming. Thanks for -- Warren for this, and Jim, thank you. I think -- are we -- do we need Jim and Warren for anything else?
Okay. You're releasing us?
Thank you. You made it easy for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, thanks for coming.
Good night, Jim.
I'm just --
Stay away.
Okay. I need a motion for -- this is item number three, Resolution 2021-163, awarding bid for engineering services in connection with the repair of the cemetery wall on Mill Road. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion or any questions?
My only question is, why CPL such a good deal? We should go to the fed for any --
Okay. Are we concerned?
No.
It's kind of very straightforward.
Very straightforward.
Yes.
I've seen these disparities before in these things.
Yeah. We've done this before, so.
Interesting they're different by fracturing, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I need a motion for Resolution 2021-164, awarding the bid for engineering service in connection with the cemetery stone holding wall. I almost thought that I was seeing double here. I'm aware that's another project. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion or questions from the Town Board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you for calling us.
That's all.
Thanks for coming. I need a motion for Resolution 2021-165, advertising for a permanent part-time assessors day. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved unanimously. Item six, I need a motion for Resolution 2021-166, summer 2021 recreation department hire.
So moved.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Is there any discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I want to say thanks to Carrie, our ref director. It has been difficult finding help this year. Everybody's challenged. She's doing a great job keeping the pool open with lifeguards and camp going with counselors. So thank you. Great job.
Turnout has been pretty good.
Turnout has been pretty good. The people came, and they're coming back, so. Need a motion for Resolution 2021-167 for our intermunicipal agreement with Dutchess County for snow removal and ice control services. I'll make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. This is for our IMA with the county for us plowing and de-icing the county road within the town. Any questions from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I will make a motion for Resolution 2021-168, our preliminary accounts payable abstracts, 48 checks totaling $56,675.48. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. And I will make a motion for Resolution 2021-169 for capital projects abstracts, one check for $3,380. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion or any questions from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Item number 10, Resolution 2021-170, a request for quotations for maintenance of shared town and village solar generation facilities, repairs, and I guess, yeah. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Is there any comments or questions?
Yes. We got an email from our highway superintendent, who seems to me to be saying that we don't need this service, that he's got it under control, and it's an unnecessary expense. Am I interpreting his email correctly?
Correct.
For the highway, there -- the town has four solar sites. One on the roof of this building, one at the transfer station, one at the pool --
And one here.
And one at the highway. Oh, so this is not just the highway? No, and also it's joint with the village.
It's a -- this is a shared service with the village, and if something goes wrong, we won't have coverage to fix it. He does get up on a scissor to take the snow out, he does maintain it, and it's not included in any kind of service contract.
That's right.
Sure. Any other questions or -- all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously, and thank you Mayor Bassett for working with us on this, and the village trustees, another joint effort with the village. I have a couple of -- oh, I have one resolution from the floor. I need permission from the Town Board to sign a certain settlement agreement with an employee, per a confidential settlement agreement, as decided in executive session.
Moving.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. All in favor of having me sign the settlement as approved by our labor consultant, Michael Richardson?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Alan, did you want to -- I need to make a motion to go into executive session to -- oh, no, there's one more, sorry.
Oh, I have one, too.
Okay, great. Resolution 20 -- I guess the one we just passed will be 2021-171, John, and the new one will be 72, or does it matter?
Just keep going.
Okay, so the settlement is 172. I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2021-171, engaging a contractor to assist with website and other internet marketing tools for town business. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second? Without a daily town newspaper, we do have the daily freedom here, and a lot of things coming up and COVID coming back, we do need help in messaging to the public on what we're doing. We're hearing a lot, we don't know what's going on, so we're going to try and hire someone to help us get more of what we're doing out to the public, whether it's reviving our Facebook page, which is -- we need someone to manage, or e-blast mailings. We're going to hire a marketing person to help us.
Three months, right?
Three months, $800 a month. Amber Quigley, it's actually -- we are hiring a slight amendment to this. It's called -- bear with me, it's not -- it's called Maxfield Design. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Alan, you have something?
Yeah, I have a resolution moving that we pay refunds to six families who bought individual pool passes and now are buying family passes. The total for the six is $625, and I have a list of the names and the amounts.
Oh.
It's based on the revised --
It's based -- yeah, we pass it --
Hold on, this is -- you're making a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed.
Okay, so, yeah, last meeting, we established a family rate for the whole season pass, and people got individual season passes. In one case, somebody spent $400, four family members, and so they need a refund. And I have a list of names and amounts for each.
I don't think we need that. We could give it to John for the resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Anybody else have any new business? Any comments or questions for us? Hi.
Hi. My name's Linda Kagan. I moved here a couple of years ago. I don't know that this is the right form to ask these questions, but I live on Acroco Road, and I'm one of many people very concerned about potential for special variants being provided to the Rockledge, proposed Rockledge development. And I'm -- as I said, I'm new to the town.
Welcome.
Thank you. I love being here. And I really like to, you know, understand, like, how the Town Board is part of the process. Because I just -- I'm not angry or anything, I just simply don't know.
Yeah, it tends to --
And I would -- I would like to find a way, as some of the things you mentioned tonight, you know, transparency, getting the word out, you know, the character of our town, and now it's my town, too. I'm very concerned that maybe -- maybe there are the right checks and balances in place, but I'm not confident of that, and there's a lot of tremendous concern. I started a new group called the Rhinebeck Coalition to gather signature petition signatures, which, you know, we're getting, you know, 50 to close, you know, and upwards every week. And everyone I've spoken to --
Rhinebeck Coalition?
Yeah. It's just an LLC.
Is it online anywhere?
Not yet, well, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for coming, and do you want to --
Well, I just, you know, my question is, you know, at the last, one of the second-to-last made public hearing on it -- to last made public hearing on it, because it's been a sort of culling process, which is fine. Someone, the attorney for the developer said that the town board had approved it, and I couldn't get anyone to explain that. Mike Trimple said he didn't understand what she meant.
So can I, does anyone want to answer this or can I jump in?
Linda and I, we spoke earlier today, Linda and I ran through the farmer's market, so that was the nature of my question earlier today.
Right. So we're the legislative body. We write the laws that the planning board and the zoning board of appeals prove, must follow. The zoning board of appeal exists to find variances for our law, and the planning board goes through the planning process based on our law. This town adopted a comprehensive plan and a new set of damn zoning laws in 2009...
I read most of that.
Before any of us were on the board.
Right.
We have passed dozens of local laws, a lot of them zoning laws to amend the zoning. So I think if the attorney said the town board approved it, he must have meant tacitly we approved it by our legislation of the zoning laws. So zoning allows for things to be built. I believe Rock Ledge is in the R3...
C5.
C5, the residential country 5 zoning, and there's 136 acres there.
That's what I thought.
And so they are allowed to build one unit per five acres. However, it's a pre-existing historic structure, so there's a density bonus for adaptive reuse in our zoning law. So this is allowed within the zoning, just like if you buy a piece of land, you're allowed to build a house on it. So I believe they're putting 36 units in on 126 acres?
Actually, 60 building acres, not 126 buildings.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. That's subtracting steep slope and water and wetlands, which we don't have any, our planner missed that. It would have been great to have him here for that. So it's not before us. All of the zoning goes before the planning board. There is statutory, which means legally responsible board at arm's length for us. We have nothing to, we do not oversee them. We appoint members and we fund them. That's it. They are in charge with all approvals for building. We write the laws to allow it, and we did write, or the previous town boards did write a zoning law to allow this land to be developed.
But the thing, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Linda.
And I think she said that there's an application for a variance that's in the process now? Did you say that?
Yes, the special variance, because in fact, based on, you know, before the adaptive reuse, which is questionable as to whether it is an adaptive reuse, and other, you know...
Well, it is an adaptive reuse because it's an old building that's being used for a new purpose.
Let's stick with the special variance application. We would have nothing to do with that.
That's the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah. That doesn't come to us.
Is this before the zoning board of appeals or the planning board?
The rain house before the planning board.
Yeah, I don't think there are any variances being asked of this project.
Yes, it is special variance instead of the 13 units that, based on the usage and the RC5 designation in the area, they're asking for special variance to go from 13 to 36.
That's the, no, that would be in the planning board. They would, I don't know that this is before the zoning board. I don't...
I didn't say it was. I said it's before the planning board. I'm just, I'm trying to understand what, whether or not, you know, what the system is. I mean, I understand that, this is my understanding, that the proposed, you know, developer builder has to provide all updated and they haven't, they haven't get reports. And then the planning board then gets to ask the builder to fund the independent review of that.
Sure.
And so I was just wondering, like, is there a lockstep process for that or is it up to the planning board?
It is up to the planning board. The process is laid out in our law and we have no say over this. We, the only thing that we did, and again, I don't think any of us were sitting here when this was done, is write the zoning law to allow this to be developed. So we're the legislative body and the planning board oversees all projects. They give all special use permits.
Yeah. So then my follow-up question is, could, how, what would be the process of initiating new legislation to not allow for the concentrated development in a farmland, the farmland area of Rhinebeck to maintain the character and the quality of not just the land, but Falls ford Creek and the roads, all the country roads there?
So there is a process outlined for petitioning the town board for a zoning amendment. John, do you know where it is on our website?
General code.
General code.
Is that an E-code?
It would be E-code.
Or, I'm sure it's somewhere on our website because I was here when we amended that to very clearly go through how we do it. And you would have to hire a planner and an attorney and write a law and do all the studies and petition us to take this up as something we'd like to do. And it couldn't just be done for one property that's called spot zoning.
I know, I want to do it for the whole rural area.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the whole town is rural, but, you know, when the comprehensive...
It would be so long if these things happened.
Well, we all just moved here and things changed and people are allowed to build. So the aim of the comprehensive plan is to allow development while maintaining our rural characteristics.
Right, right. So there's, that's a direct conflict. And I have read a good part of the 187 pages of the comprehensive plan, and I've spent a lot of time talking to Sally Masurra about it, because I know she headed the effort, you know, trying to, there's a conservation requirement in the, in the plan, as well as it clearly indicates that the developer is supposed to seek, you know, local input. And none of those things are happening. So I know you're the, I now understand, thank you, that you're the legislative, you know, body of the town, and that's great, but if the laws are not being, and I, I know the plan is not a law, but are there...
The public hearings are an opportunity for public input and the planning board is holding public hearings.
No, they are, they're doing great.
That's public input.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was...
And I think this has been going on for seven years. I think this has been before the town for seven years.
Yeah, it has been, because they've proposed all sorts of things that many people have proposed previously, you know. So, okay, so that, that would be the only potential opportunity, which would be to hire an attorney, not that I'm willing to figure out what I need to do.
What do you practice?
Well, it's been 28 years, so I do a lot of things.
So, I mean, you would have to go to a land use attorney and hire a planner and petition us to change our zoning law, and then we would have to decide if that's something we want to do or not.
Right.
And it's a complex, lengthy, lengthy process. Yeah.
Well, it's important. I mean, if we're going to maintain the rural character of the town, then it's something that's, I think, could be more worthwhile doing, not just for us now, but generations to come. Because we all know, you know, the earth is a troubled place, and the more we can protect it, the better. So, and thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming, thank you. Any other comment from the public? I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the health and employment doohickeys of two specific employees.
The medical history of...
Thank you. Medical employment history of two specific employees.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.